The Stephanie Roof contract votes, so I just want to make sure that the three votes that are in our minutes also get added to the voting record.
Okay, so noted.
And the second thing is on page six of our minutes from the regular meeting of April 24th, I would just like to ask that my question about the location of the fire trucks that are currently in Jockey Hollow be added to the minutes that didn't make it in, I just want to make sure that that's in there.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, so I'm passing the consent calendar unanimously, going on to, um, thank you, going on to public participation, any public participation? Seeing them, going on to appointments, um, Mrs. Martin, Sandra, do you say?
Sandra De- uh, Desai.
Desai.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would move this council approve the appointment of Sandra Desai, 102 Wild Horse Court, with permission on aging for a term ending seven to eighteen.
Kate, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dan Hunzberger, any discussion?
Sandra is a newer member of Monroe, having relocated here from Stanford a year and a half ago. She's been self-employed for over forty years. Her past volunteerism include Girl Scouts, Advisory Board of E-S-U-M-S STEM School in West Haven, and she serves as co-president of the Fairford County Communications Association. Her past experiences as a business owner coupled with her volunteer experience give her a skill set that will make her a strong contributor to this commission. And this appointment bills will be, and she'll be completing the term of Kathleen Quinn.
Okay, so can I have a vote for Sandra Desai coming on as an appointee? Passes eight to zero, going on to Bruno Maini, Mr. Rooney?
Yeah, I requested the council appoint Bruno Maini of Woodlong Road to planning a zoning commission alternate to replace Paul Lisi with the term ending eleven twenty-seven seventeen.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Mr. Maini is currently serving on the Economic Development Commission and operates a small roofing and gutter business based in Monroe. He is a thirteen-year resident at town, is a proud parent of two children, attend Jockey Hollow in Monroe Metro. Mr. Maini has a history of community involvement and currently serves as the coach director of AOSO Soccer and is an umpire in Monroe Little League.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of Bruno Maini? Passes eight to zero, going on to action items. A Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters, so my first report is from the Board of Ed liaison, Dan Hunzberger. At the beginning of the two thousand seven, May first, two thousand seventeen Board of Ed meeting, the board recognized Evan Murray, Justin Sceana, and Thomas Shiskin, who have enrolled into the military to serve after their graduation. The board was briefed on the cost of freshman sports. The current pay to play for Monroe students is tied as the highest in our DRG, but also tied with Trumbull. The family cap is the highest DRG. The board was informed that the U.S. News and World Report Magazine, two thousand seventeen, best high schools ranking, Massic High School thirteenth in Connecticut and eight hundred eighty-one nationwide. Dr. Zammeri made a presentation on the proposed one-to-one Chromebooks program. He proposed a testing period of providing fifty Chromebooks to a test group to see if an extended program would be a success. The cost of the Chromebooks used during the test would be funded through a grant already obtained by the district. The board was brought up to date on the new anonymous alerts patented anti-bullying app program that allows students to report negative activity in schools. And then lastly, the board unanimously approved John Batista to serve as the interim school superintendent and Jack Zammeri as the interim assistant superintendent. And then the report from Commission for the Aging. The members who attended the book club are very impressed with Jack Zammeri's participation in the club's discussion. The commission continued its discussion of the previous month concerning attracting more participation through the rebranding of the center as well as providing new and different services as a way of attracting more uses of the center. And then the Board of Health, their report continues to conduct strategic planning sessions with their steering committee, but a full board meeting has not been held since the last town council meeting. Their five-to-nine board meeting has been moved to May eleventh. V E S, EMS Commission tie, met on four twenty-six. They reported that the first few weeks using V E M S as a sole contractor for both daytime and paramedic staffing has been working very well, and they will be meeting with V E M S leadership to ensure open communication and sharing of any operational concerns during the transition. I met with the fire marshal and he said everything was smooth, there were a few small fires in town, but nothing, nothing that could not be, you know, put out quickly. That's my report, going on to B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Rec Matters, Mr. Reed?
Thank you. We have not met since the last meeting, council meeting, however, there are two updates. First, very briefly, Mr. Cooper from Park and Rec has kept me in the loop on some of the advancements as promised. These are just quick logistical updates for interest. The tennis court project, they have the concrete poured, the fencing is the next step, that's going to take place next week, painting of the service and striping will be done after cure time. So he expects a mid-June opening for Play Weather Dependent, which is, which is really good news. June twenty-second now, I know the last meeting, I informed the, the public that we were waiting to hear the date, it is June twenty-second for the public hearing for the Wolf Park Athletic Field project. And then the arts and the park fundraising campaign, Mr. Cooper did want to let us know the summer concert series for theater performances, that project was approved by Park and Rec Commission, soliciting funds for the program townwide. There's a letter attached which I can make available for the next council meeting, and then solicitation should also be hitting homes and businesses by May nineteenth, so I think he's kind of far and wide spread. The other update I have moving on from Park and Rec is for the town engineer. We have met with Mr. Schatzline, Scott Schatzline, over the last course, during the last meeting, and as promised, Scott has volunteered to come here to our meeting tonight to just talk a little bit about the Lotzip process. What does that mean, really high level? I think the detail is going to come after the design phase, but he's going to be looking for a consensus for us to approve him to go further with the, with the process with the state, and I think you'll find the presentation very interesting, so I look forward to that, but I'll concede to that to the new business.
Did he mention anything about a monitor when they have the tennis courts open?
Frank Cooper?
Yeah.
He did not. I can answer.
I'm just curious, because when tennis is real hot, we had monitors and we fought over getting the courts, as Mrs. Martin and I would readily attest to.
I'll take note on that.
Okay, C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. O'Rourke?
Thank you. LNA met last Thursday, May fourth, we approved Bruno Maini as a P and Z alternate. We also discussed and met with Scott Schatzline regarding the multi-use trails extension to which he'll be giving further report here this evening. We briefly discussed purchase policy, and our next meeting will be scheduled for next Monday.
Okay, thank you, Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, the committee has not met since our last town council meeting.
And EMS facility update?
And again, similarly, that, that committee has not met since the last council meeting either.
Okay, first selectmen's update?
First and foremost, many of you know, and I think you read my email today, that Mr. Ray Knapp, former council member, former involved in a lot of different things, Health Department, Health District, passed away on Friday. His services, his wake will be tomorrow from four to eight at Viola, and his services, you'll have to read the email, I forgot what it was.
It's Wednesday at one P.M.
One, it was one P.M., but at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for one of our colleagues who served this town very well. All right, and, um...
Chalk Hill?
I did get a, excuse me.
I, I thought you were going on to Chalk Hill.
No, I do have one more thing to say. I got a brief summary, I didn't get a chance to make copies of it, if you'd like it, I'll read through it, a brief summary of per professional arbitration award slash pension. The town's last best offer on issue of employee employer payments for pensions, sole issue, was accepted by the part of the arbitration panel. This last best offered mirrored the 401A language that supervisors and clerical unions have agreed to three-three match defined contribution. It also mirrored the last best offer, which was awarded the town in the highway arbitration. Per professionals have the ability to choose whether or not they wish to participate in a 401A plan, therefore, it is not known at this time what the associated costs are. If anybody would like, I can make a copy of this and send it out to you. It's dated May fourth from our Labor Council, Dave Ryan. That's it, on my side.
Any questions? Oh, Mr. O'Koore?
Mr. Babik, what union is that for?
What's that one?
What unions was the arbitration on?
Per professional.
Could you scan that and email it to the council, if you have?
Okay, any questions? Mrs. Martin?
Just a real quick question. Mr. Babik, where are we on the request from Strategic Planning to get information from the department heads and stuff?
As I mentioned in the last meeting, I've gotten a lot of that copulated, put together, almost everything you're asking for is online, but I chose instead of giving department heads during the budget to take it upon myself to put that together. It's a sheet that I just have to get out to you, but it is, again, everything that you're asking for is online already, I will just put it in one central location for you, and it's almost done.
Thank you, okay, anybody else? All right, so Chalk Hill updates?
Madam Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I noticed in our packet we had another appointment to Economic Development that wasn't on the agenda.
I don't know. Does anybody know about that?
Is that the appointment of Dave Geizmeyer?
Yes.
It was stamped, I believe that was done last time.
I'm sorry?
It was stamped, it has a stamp on it from last meeting.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Rooney.
You're welcome.
Chalk Hill updates? Nothing.
Madam Chairman, can I just, since it's on the agenda, just to ask the question. Mr. Babik, I asked you, I think it was three meetings ago now, about, because the budget passed, it was the meeting after the budget passed, that since the, we have, I believe, fifty thousand dollars in our budget for Chalk Hill, that if you could provide us or lay out to the council what is going to happen from now until the close of our fiscal year, because as I understand it, we approved money to operate the building through June thirtieth, that was done through a transfer, but who's responsible for what and when to make sure that the building is in the way that we want it to be in for July first or somewhere around there? How, how is the council supposed to know what the building should look like and be like, and who's responsible for what?
That'd be Chris Nowacki, and what do you, again, what do you want it to look like when you only gave me fifty thousand dollars? What do you, what do you want us to do?
No, I'm saying, from now until June thirtieth...
There's programs in there.
Okay, so, I was reading the Strategic Planning Committee minutes from their last meeting, from the April twenty-first meeting. There's still discussions about security, there's discussions about if things are going to be, the system's going to be drained, there's discussions about items that are in the building that need to be moved to different places in town.
Staff is meeting on that as we speak. They had a meeting on it last week, unfortunately, I was not there.
So, could you provide us with a spreadsheet of what's going to happen in the different places of the building, who's responsible for it? Here's what I'm trying to avoid. We're at our July meeting, and things are still going on, there's still stuff in the building, people have dropped the ball, things have been go, it's been busy in Town Hall, and then the money's going to tick down, and we're not going to have enough money in the budget to do what we need to do by the time we get to next budget cycle.
I'll ask out Chris Nowacki to update that. He's, he's the person solely responsible, he's our building maintenance person.
I look forward to meeting the next meeting.
If it's ready for next meeting.
Okay, so we're going on to new business?
Madam Chairman, can I go back to that appointment again?
Sure. The Geesmore one?
Yes, why is it not in front of us when we have it in our packet?
There may be a correction here, because earlier in this meeting, I pulled this out, and we do have it in the packet, and it isn't on the agenda. So I had to talk about it, we believed that it had been approved previously, but I think this was missed on the agenda, I think you may have a valid point here, Dan.
Because it does say that it's supposed to be presented on May eighth.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you, I think it just missed the agenda, made it in the packet.
We did not, we did not approve it before.
Yeah, I think it's not on the agenda, but it's in the packet.
Was it approved at LNA?
It doesn't need to go through LNA, because it's an appointment, it's not an elected position.
I know he's a Republican, but he should be put through.
No, elected officials go through.
Yeah, I'm saying we should.
This is an appointment, I think it was overlooked on the agenda, I think you have a valid point.
Is there a way we can correct that, so he can be appointed?
You'd have to.
EDC, could I make a motion that it be added to the agenda?
Sure, so Dan Hunz, I'm just doing this so that the person knows who did it. Dan Hunzberger made a motion to add David Geesmore to the agenda for what, Mr. Hunzberger? Just so you get...
Well, his appointment to Economic Development Commission for a term ending January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Then do I have a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Rooney's seconding it, any discussion? So, all in favor? So this passes eight to zero, and I will try to remember to mention it to Tanya tomorrow, and make sure that Frank knows. Okay, all right, going on to new business. Scott Schatzline is with us, as was mentioned before, about this multi-use trail authorize, authorization to present, so thank you, Mr. Schatzline.
Just give me a second.
Sure, we all, just for the record, we all got the plan, and do you have that, Tina Marie? Mine?
Do you need it?
No. Who's the Tonic Valley Rail Trail?
I'm going to switch your video feed to the monitor.
Actually, that is right up there, Tina Marie.
Guests at home can see the plan. Okay, so, for the record, you all know me, but for the record, my name is Scott Schatzline, I'm the town engineer, and I just want to spend a few minutes tonight to give you an update on a project that we're working on. Project is under the Lotzip funding program. Lotzip, you're probably familiar with Lozip, which is a local capital improvement program. Lotzip is a fairly new program that the state has put out to expedite the project process and try to get projects out quicker. It puts a lot of the responsibility on the town to do design, follow up, and the state just is, is still involved, but not to the degree that they were with the STP program that you're probably more familiar with. Let me go through the plan quickly, I'll just give you an overview of what the project is, and then after that, I'll explain a little further about the funding process. So this is the Who's at Tonic Valley Rail Trail, and this is the last link of the trail that goes from just, just a little north of Victoria Drive over to the section that's in Wolf Park, right when you turn to go down the hill into the parking area of the park. So, the goal is to connect those two pleaded portions of the trail with this link through the Lotzip funding program. It's a, it's a, if you're wound up, it's about one point five million dollar project, and these are preliminary plans that I put together to submit for funding through, through that program. The submission was accepted, and the funding was approved, and a letter was sent from the state DOT to the town committing to the funding. So the town received that letter and accepted that commitment, and then now we're going to be working on the next step. So let me just show you the, this is the first drawing, and right over here is where Victoria Drive is, this is that sharp bend in Maple, Maple Drive. If you're familiar with the trail, you know that it comes up, up the hill from, there's a curve here, it comes up the hill from the, the river, the aquatic river, and it crosses over an existing wooden bridge that crosses the west branch of the aquatic river, and right there, kind of just stops and turns into just a dirt path. Right now, the people using the trail are forced to, to go down Maple Drive, turn right, come down a little ways on Purdy Hill, and then go up the Entrance Drive into the park. The new trail will go from that wooden bridge, and will run along the, right adjacent to where this curve is on Maple Drive, will run down the hill and behind the Public Works garage, behind the Dog Pound, and behind where the bus bar used to be. It will be located on state property for this run, and it will be located on town property behind the Dog Pound and where the old bus bar used to be. At that point, it will cross Purdy Hill Road, then it will enter Wolf Park and run behind, if you're familiar, there's a large stand of pines in here, we wanted to get it off the road and away and really get into the park and enjoy that scenery, so I brought it behind those pines and over to where the river is. The next drawing shows where we pick up from the last, this is the Entrance Drive right here into the park, and it's, it's following, if you're familiar with the trails, there's a blue trail that runs along this portion of the park. This trail, this new trail will literally be taking the place of that blue trail, will eliminate it, and will replace it with this trail for that section. It'll run along the river, following pretty much the tow slope of the driveway that goes into the park, and then the next section of trail will, it'll come very close to where this trail that goes around the lake currently is located, and there's a little parking area up here, it'll run right along the back of that parking area, there'll be an interconnection between the trail and the trail that runs around the, the lake, and then it will proceed on, up at this point, it will be pretty much even, or as far as elevation goes, with the Entrance Drive, and then it'll slowly go down the hill to the tow slope again, and then come back up and meet the driveway right across from where the current trail terminates. I'm going to try to do it, or need to do it, in compliance with ADA, so we'll have to adjust things as we go along. I did a preliminary grading plan, I believe we can meet the ADA requirements for that. We've talked with the Parks Department, or with Frank Cooper, he's brought that to their commission, they've seen these plans, they have, in concept, have approved of that as well, so. Upon receiving that, I sent in an application to Lotzip, they receive applications through our Regional Council of Governments, which is called MetroCog. MetroCog submitted the application on behalf of the town, and the state approved it. So, we're at the point now where MetroCog is looking for a, the project to proceed. So, as I said, the town has sent back the letter of commitment that the state sent to us, committing to the one point five million dollars. Now, just to tell you a little bit about how Lotzip works, the, this is different from the other funding programs, this is federal funds that come in, and the, the process is that the town has to do the design work, and the town has to pay for the design work. So instead of having a funding program where we get reimbursed for our portion all along the project, we have to really administer the project, so we have to go out, we have to procure a design consultant or do it in-house, and we have to do the design, and that's on our dime. So, I've submitted a request for a hundred fifty thousand dollars through the capital improvement budget process, that was reduced down in that budget process, down to a hundred thousand dollars. So, right now, we've got a hundred thousand dollars to pay for the upfront costs of this program. Once it's designed, the MetroCog has funds that they received, where they will do a peer review through a consultant to make sure that everything is in order. I'll do a review, the MetroCog will do a review, and then at final design, the state of Connecticut will do a review to make sure that everything is, is in order. If we have to do any right-of-way acquisition, that's also something that we're responsible for, except that rights-of-way is reimbursed. So unlike the rest of this project, the state, this is a federally funded project, but the state will reimburse for the rights-of-way acquisition, both for the administrative costs and the actual taking fees for the right-of-way. I'm not anticipating much, because it's a town park, town property, and state land, there may be some easements, things like that. That's because the state has a responsibility for right-of-way acquisition, and they're kind of pushing it on us. So, what will happen is, once it gets designed and the estimate is accepted by the state, they then look for the town to commit to the project through what's called a PALS, and that is a, an agreement that we sign, it's really an addendum on the state agreement that they have with the town. At the beginning, every five-year period, that you may recall, the state went through and had a standard agreement that they entered into with the town, and you guys had your town attorney review that and approved it. So they'll issue an addendum on that, and that's what commits us to the project. We'll then bid the project, and then depending on what the costs come in at, they then will adjust the amount, if it's within twenty percent, and if it's not within twenty percent, then there's a process where we have to go back and revisit the design, et cetera. Once the state accepts that number, we then bid it, and we see what the bids come in at. If we do, at that point, then the state will literally cut the town a check. So we will get a check for one point five million dollars, we deposit it, and then we draw from that to do the construction. If the construction comes in less than that, then we have to then give whatever money's left over back to the state. So it's a little scary, and that, up till now, the state has always kind of helped us with projects and held our hand through the whole thing, and we've got reimbursement. This is a little scarier, because work is done properly, we bid it, and we get this chunk of money, and we're responsible to do it, and, and do the records, and make sure that when we're audited for it, that everything winds up and, and everything's okay. So, that's how the funding process works. Now, as far as where we are in the project, as I said, we received the letter of commitment from the state, and now we're at the point where MetroCog is looking for us to proceed with the project. Again, this is an expedited process, and they want to see it move quickly, that's the whole purpose of it, so that we can avoid all red tape that we usually go through with the state. So they're looking for us to show that we're starting design. In order to do that, I got to put out a RFP to get a price for procurement of a consultant to do the design. Now, the process involves, it's really up to the town how you want to hire a professional consultant to do the design. However, MetroCog has, in anticipation of the process that we have to go through, they have gone through what's called a QBS process, which is a quality-based selection, and what that is, is I'm a member of their technical advisory committee, and I'm also, I was also chosen to be a member of their committee for QBS. So I literally sat on a committee that put out an RFQ for design consultants, we got about ten consultants submitted a proposal, we then shortlisted those consultants through through a, uh, structured, uh, written, uh, rating system. Each one of us on the panel did that. We sent in our ratings, and we shortlisted down to five consultants. We then spent a day interviewing those consultants. They came and they had four or five members from each firm come. We interviewed them, uh, they gave a presentation, we asked questions, and then we, again, rated them on four or five, uh, specific categories. Once we were through rating them, we then, uh, averaged the, the, um, numbers, and we picked three firms that are pre-qualified to do design. So, uh, we've already done a lot of the legwork for the towns that are in the region. So all we would have to do at this point is pick those three. We, we can pick one of those companies, or what I'm suggesting we do is just take all three of them, put out an RFP to those three companies, and ask for, uh, a proposal which would involve, uh, pricing and some more information about qualifications. At that point, uh, those would come in at a specific date and time. We'd open them up, and, uh, we'd form a internal committee of a few people. Maybe me, uh, the, uh, Public Works Director, uh, possibly someone else with a little technical background. We'd look at those proposals, and then we would make a recommendation to the town for, uh, who we feel would, should be hired to do the work. Usually it's based on their fee, but we don't necessarily want to go for the lowest fee. We want to go for the, you know, closer to the lowest fee. Uh, we want to look at, uh, conflicts of interest, other projects, our familiarity with, uh, previous work, that kind of thing. So, uh, that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm at the point where I need to put the RFP out. And I want to be transparent, I want to explain this process to you, and I want to get your, uh, acceptance on moving forward with, with doing that.
So if I understand this correctly, we can ask questions? And then will by consensus decide to go ahead with an RFP? And then you'll just, uh, RFP to get price for consultants to do the design?
Right, then I'll be, uh, really, that you're, uh, if I'm understanding the charter correctly, your, your main function is when it's all done, that the procurement process is done. And I work with the town attorney, we come up with a contract agreement, and that is coming to the council. You have to, uh, approve all contracts. So you would approve that before we actually hire the consultant to do the design?
I think tonight, we're just looking to, uh, we'll have to proceed.
Right, right, right. We're looking for consensus, correct, everybody? Mr. Heinzberger?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, of course.
In the previous screen where it goes behind, or through state property and goes behind the, uh, town garage, any of that wetlands that would...
Yeah, there's a couple, um, complications, and that will be, uh, it's, it's gonna be permitting, obviously. So, uh, it, it goes through wetland areas. Wetlands are, um, this is the type of use that is usually, um, very much acceptable in a wetland. Brings people in, it educates people, it's a passive use within a wetland. Things we're gonna have to deal with are wetlands. Uh, we also are going through a floodplain. Uh, it's also something that is usually acceptable within a floodplain. The idea is that this can be flooded. If we get a flood, it's gonna get flooded, and we won't be able to use the trail while it's flooded. And when the flood goes down, the trail will be there, minimal cleaning, that kind of thing. So there's floodplain issues, there's wetland issues. Uh, there are environmental concerns. Uh, we will also have to pay for environmental issues. Now, before the design is done, the state of Connecticut is supposed to be doing a, um, I forget what they, what they refer to it as. But they are doing a initial study, and they're gonna advise the town on if they think there's any environmental potential for environmental issues. So we would know that before we get involved, and I'd have to get more information on that. But I believe that that's also something that's under, uh, the design costs. If there's any design issues that happen during construction, it's another item that we're on the list of. So, one of the things that we're gonna have to be very careful about is this, um, uh, this process for, um, design and the fact that we've got $100,000. Typically, engineering costs range between 10 and 15% of a project cost. So 10%, you're looking at 150,000, and it could be more, it could be 15%. That's why I put the 150,000 in the capital budget, but it, it was reduced. I mean, there, there, it was a process you guys went through, and, and it was a difficult process. And that's the number, so we'll, we'll have to see. We'll have to see how it, uh, pans out. And then if, if it's, turns out to be more money, then I'll be back, and we'll have to talk about it, and you'll have to figure out what you want to do with it.
So can any one of those issues derail the plan?
Um, it could only derail in terms of cost, I think. In terms of you guys not wanting to go through with it.
And what's the estimate on the cost on the top side?
Well, the cost, again, for you, is the, the design cost. So if there's an environmental issue, you're not paying for the cleanup. You're paying for the design, the, uh, uh, the 210 or 310 process that they go through, the report to, uh, uh, investigate it and come up with the, what needs to be done.
And my second question on, in our packet, we received a letter from Attorney Fracassini concerning this issue. And under number 3C, there's a comment that you explained that the commitment to fund can be rescinded without penalty. And in the second, in the first full paragraph on the next page, it talks about, uh, that it's apparent to me that this funding commitment from LoCIP, as I stated before, can be rescinded without penalty as far as the town of Monroe is concerned.
Yeah, um, well, you say without penalty. Really, any place along this project, until we get, until we get the check and actually start work, we, you guys, uh, the penalty would be if, obviously, we're paying for design upfront. So if you decided, let's say it got bid, and, uh, you decided for whatever reason that you didn't want to proceed.
Yeah, but this is reading that the money from the state can be rescinded?
No, the money from the state is committed. There's a letter, commitment letter that was sent to the first selectman, and he accepted it. That money is, is in the bin, what they refer to it as, through MetroCog. So those funds are available, and if we do what we're supposed to do, they, they can't rescind.
That's not what Attorney Fracassini's letter says?
Well, I can get clarification for that, but my, my understanding is that letter...
He says it twice.
Well, the letter that came from the state is the commitment letter. And there was confusion because I, my understanding is that some, some thought that that commitment letter was the town committing to it. It's actually the state, uh, committing the funding, and the town has accepted that money. I got the letter here somewhere, but...
Thank you, Mrs. Martin, yes, of course. And then you go back to Heinzberger if he wants. Go ahead, Mrs. Martin.
Um, Scott, when you came to LNA, um, you told us that the, um, that this project was on the Capital Project List and identified on that. And you were gonna look into where, where did it hit? And is it at the top, is it...
What do you, what do you mean by the top? You mean, uh, time-wise?
Time-wise, mm, start with time-wise.
Yeah, um, it's, it, um, you know, I, I can go back to the office and get that budget, but I put it in for this ye, this year. The end of this year, because the, um...
But how does, how does Capital Project rank it? Or do they, as far as...
Well, when I submitted, the projects that I submitted for the Capital, um, the way it was ranked was, I, I submitted a 10-year plan, and it was ranked by the top priority was put in year one. So each, the, what I did was I, I divided it out so that, for instance, Pepper Street is, there's different phases of Pepper Street. There is a design in that we're gonna be entering into the construction. So I divided it up and put it into the years that I thought it would apply. So this one was put into this year because they're looking for the design to start. And really, the, the cost for you is the design.
Right, and we, may I? We, we did talk in, in LNA, and you had given us, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, the indication, um, contrary to what Mr. Heinzberger's reading, that at any point along this process, if, and for whatever reason, we weren't comfortable with it, we could withdraw. Now, the danger in that being, it'll probably be a long time before they offer you money again.
Yeah, this is a competitive, uh, funding program. So if you decide you don't want to do it, they're gonna move on, and another town's gonna get the money.
Right, right.
Uh, so...
And then how, how did we address the issue of, um, that's only $50,000 budgeted for this?
No, it's a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred, but 150 was what you were, you were estimating what...
And that's, oh, that's on the low side, that's 10%.
Right.
Now, one thing that might save us is that this is not a project like Pepper Street, or it's not a bridge. Uh, this is a project that's a trail, and it's just, uh, uh, processed stone. It's not gonna be paved, there's not gonna be utilities. Um, so, design-wise, uh, aside from, uh, retaining walls, which may take a little bit of, uh, design work, um, uh, environmental issues may take some design, uh, extra design work. I'm hoping that, because it's not a road project, that the design fee will come in, uh, lower. But, uh, again, the industry standard, and a lot of times with these funding programs, unfortunately, um, the consultants know that it's federal funding, and they know the standard is 10 to 15%. So the numbers come in, uh, probably a little, on these funding programs, the numbers come in higher than they would be if we were putting a job out to, by ourselves. I mean, that's a sad reality, but, uh, I, I...
It was my understanding that, from LNA, that if we went with, in the design phase, our, our cost, the town's cost, and then decided we wouldn't proceed, we're, we're obviously out that money, right?
Yep.
And we're...
Well, you're shelving it, you could maybe use it, it depends on how long you let it go.
Right, right. And then that 100,000, maybe more, um, mm, you're, you're asking for a consensus tonight, and it would be, yeah, let's spend $100,000, and...
Well, no, I'm not asking that tonight. Uh, my mask, all I'm asking for is to send out the RFP. When I get those prices, that's when you're gonna know how much it's gonna cost. And then at that point, you get another look, look at it. Uh, I'll come again, and you, and, and, uh, you're gonna have to approve that agreement for whatever amount of money it is. That's when you're really gonna know...
So our, our first shot at rejection, if you will, is at that point?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Nick, was that your understanding?
Mr. Schultz, I have three questions. Um, what's the anticipated, if everything, if best-case scenario, what's, what would be completion? What would be anticipated completion on the project?
Well, uh, if we move along the way MetroCog wants us to, we're going to start design, um, this, say, July. Design will be completed, we'll, we'll bid it, and we'll probably start the work in the spring of 2018. And I'm thinking that it's really, uh, it's, it's not that complicated a project, so, uh, for the most part, I'm looking at completion by the end of that year.
Okay. Um, before you talked about rights-of-way reimbursements. Are rights-of-way reimbursements usually received by municipalities? Is it 100%?
No. Um, rights-of-way are usually coordinated by the state. And we get, like, for instance, uh, typical STP projects, uh, T21, they call it, um, which is Pepper Street. We, our, um, our exposure on that project is 10%. So we pay 10%, the state pays 10%, and the federal government pays the rest. So, um, we get reimbursement except for that 10%. In this case, we get reimbursed for it up to 100% uh, because the state's supposed to do it. And if they don't do it for us, then they reimburse us up to 100% under the LoCIP, um, amount that they're providing for the construction.
And as I understood, the funding process that you laid out before is that we get the 1.5 million dollar check, and then the town distributes the funds to the various people. Now, what if it goes over? I heard you say if it goes under, we have to send the money back.
If it goes over, um, if it's within 20%, they, um, just process that. They have to obviously accept it and go over the numbers and see why. Uh, but if, if it's within the 20%, they accept it under the current, under, under the initial PALS agreement. If it goes above 20%, they then have to float it back through MetroCog for approval, and they have to, uh, negotiate and come and agree to that amount, which it, it kind of implied that they would, if, as long as it's justified, they would. And then instead, uh, they have to, uh, issue a new PALS agreement. So you have to enter into new agreement because it goes over the 20%.
The only reason I ask those questions about, you know, right-of-way reimbursements and going over is because we all know the state fiscal, um, I say that with our staff behind you. Our fiscal, uh, house in Hartford is not going very well, and as, everything is on the table. So I'm happy to see that we are covering our tracks with different letters and acknowledgements, and, um, I just want to make sure that throughout the entire process, everything is buttoned up as much as it can be.
The reason they do that is because, uh, when I, the state reviewed my estimate, and they, uh, wanted to see that it was realistic. So they reviewed, as a matter of fact, they sent it back, and I had to adjust it. Uh, they wanted more money put in for the retaining wall, a couple of other things. Uh, that's their way of seeing that the number we're talking about is realistic. And my experience so far, at least with the state, they, they also made me use their num, their cost system that they have. They have an estimating system, uh, or numbers available. And their numbers for estimating are very concerning. There, there are, I think they're really on the high side. But at least that's been my experience so far.
Okay. Mr. Rourke?
With regards to the overage, uh, if, uh, worst case, uh, the easement, the easement part of the project caused that overage, is that something that would be covered by the state? In other words, if that was part of the 20% overage, would that be something that the state would cover?
I'm reading that the, um, the cost for the, um, acquisition is covered uh, through the LoCIP funding. And again, I don't, I'm not anticipating much because it's all state and town level.
Well, just to use an example for the, for the council here, uh, the easement on Pepper Street, there's a lot that they were having a lot of trouble with. I think, if I recall you last week saying it was $70,000.
Yeah, it was like $70,000, yeah.
That was, yeah, we wouldn't expect that type of, uh, exposure in this project. Uh, but based on the, uh, percentages of exposure, if hypothetically was that $70,000, ours would be $7,000, and the state's would be $7,000, or...
Yeah, in that project, uh, we, we just paid our 10% of it. But in this one, it's supposed to be covered. The, the whole thing's supposed to be covered. So the, the deal is, they pay for everything, we pay for design, anything associated with design.
Right, and when we were talking during LNA with regards to potential exposure on easements, uh, your professional opinion was that it would be minimal if, if at all?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could think of is easements, they, and, and, um... Yeah, I mean, uh, I think the town, uh, it's a regional trail, so I don't even know if, if they would require an easement through the state property. I gotta find that out, that's the next step.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, so my questions were already asked and answered, so thank you. Um, I guess I just want to be really clear based on, because some of the other things we've heard tonight and the concepts of commitment. The only thing that we're looking to do this evening is to gain consensus from this council to proceed to an RFP, utilizing the process that you outlined, selecting the three shortlist vendors that is vetted by MetroCog, so that we can get a, a, a hard... vendors as vetted by MetroCog, so that we can get a hard number on the design phase of this, the portion that would be the town's commitment. And at that point, we'll have sufficient information to make a fully informed decision on our financial commitment to this project.
Yeah, and I think I would suggest you do it in two phases. What I could do is I could come back and I could tell you, you know, here's the number, we're recommending this company. You guys say you accept it, then I would go to the town attorney and the finance director and the three of us would work on an agreement and a contract. Once we have that, then we come back and then you make your real official-
Is there anything in that process relative to the state, the state's commitment and our commitment that would preclude us from, let's, you know, saying, deciding that the project was not something we want to pursue even at that last contract? In other words, is there anything the town's doing here that's going to put us in a commitment that we are unable to unwind from until the contract is approved? In terms of going through the RFP process that you just outlined?
No, I mean, it doesn't cost anything to do an RFP and-
I'm strictly referring to the commitment that was alluded to relative to the town's commitment to the state.
Well, let's face it, they don't have any exposure until they hand us a check. You know, once we get the check, then there's, you know-
I just want to make sure we're clear because there was some, between what was in front of us and what you said earlier.
Yeah, bear in mind, I've never-
Make sure we're fully clear.
I've never been through a Lozep project. This is fairly new. They came out in 2013 and they amended it in 2016. I've never been through the process, so I'm kind of learning as I go as well.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. I just have one more question. And then we'll go to consensus.
To go behind the busbar, are there potential environmental issues there?
There could be and I'm reading, again, that the state is supposed to help us kind of look at that ahead of time. There's a couple of waterways that we have to cross and there's wetlands and, you know, like any project, it's got a bunch of challenges.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Heinzberger, the last one?
Yeah, the state is committed to 1.5. If it goes above that, and I'm concerned about these two sentences in Attorney Fracassini's comment, given the fact that the state is in financial difficulties, that they could pull the funding of this project at any point?
Again, I don't believe that's the case. This money is available, it's already there, it's already earmarked for Lozep programs through this region. Each region gets a certain amount of money based on population, et cetera.
And what if the project ends up at 200, 2 million? Are they committed to that as well?
Well, again, if it, that's why I went through the application process I went, they had to review it and accept it. If it comes in up to 20 percent higher, it's accepted automatically. If it's more than 20 percent, they have to redo the commitment letter and redo the PALS.
But they could at that point say, no, we don't have the money at this point?
I think they could, but I think that it's, the commitment is pretty much there because it's through Cog, it's not the state, it's through the region that the money's available. I could, you know, we could, I could have or ask Fracassini, the town attorney, to look at that. But that was my understanding in talking with Metro and also with him.
Okay, are we ready for a consensus?
Yeah.
So, Terry? We're looking to price for the three consultants.
Agreed.
Ken?
Agreed.
Sean, myself, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So the consensus was unanimous, eight to zero to get the RFP for the three consultants to do the designs. Okay, Mr. Schatz, sign, that's good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I'll try to get, yes.
So I think on to the last of the public participations.
Madam Chairman, before we continue, just a housekeeping item. I believe that earlier we voted to add to the agenda the appointment of Mr. Geismar to the Economic Development Commission. However, I don't think we actually voted on the appointment itself, so I would ask that you consider calling that agenda item.
Sure.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint David Gazmire of 15 Castle Drive to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending 1/31/2018.
You have a second?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Kellogg? discussion, if we've had it, but Terry?
This will fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Joe Bacoulis. Mr. Gazmire is a lifelong resident in Monroe and has previously worked in the town as a mechanic and contractor until he joined the Monroe Police Department, who has worked for five years. Since 2012, Mr. Gazmire has been serving with the Norwalk Police Department. He is looking to give back to his hometown by serving as a volunteer and using his varied employment experience and history and his role on the EDC.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Heinzberger? Oh, is he just saying?
I'm sorry.
Okay, all in favor? So passes eight to nothing. Second participation, anyone wish to participate at the second level?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
There was a letter from Mr. Schatz line concerning a visit that I was given the opportunity as was Mr. Kellogg and I just wanted to publicly thank him for allowing us to come and visit.
Yes, and Mrs. Claude Martin and I are gonna go this Thursday.
It's certainly worth it for anybody on the commission.
If anybody wants to join us Thursday, we're going at 1:30 to see the whole land use and what they do. We immediately get the packs to the annex right up there. All right? So I hear a motion to adjourn. So moved. Kevin, second?
Second.
Mr. Heinzberger, go all in favor? Passes eight to zero.